Who lived in Naco and the San Jose neighborhoods now had to double their weight. Because they could only get to their destination, their home destination, every other route. So presently, they're waiting almost two hours and sometimes as long as two and a half hours to get back to where they started. So it's a payoff, it's a positive thing for some people because there's more chance to get the bus. There were three other runs, a run is every time it makes a loop. And others had to wait twice as long, sometimes more than that, to make the run from their destination back to their origination. So from an efficiency standpoint, I think we're looking at six of one and half a dozen of another. Somebody is gonna wait. It's either the rider who now, if we were back in a loop system where there were no alternate schedules, then everybody has to wait. Because that headway now is back to an hour and forty, an hour and fifty minutes. Up from just over an hour to an hour and thirty. So an extra ten to twenty minutes. It's a good thing though, for the Naco and San Jose residents. Because instead of waiting two plus hours, they only have to do the hour forty to hour fifty. Does that making sense for you? Okay, so that was the overall kind of look at route efficiency. How do we make a route more efficient? I'm not sure that we can make it more efficient. We can just make it less painful for some, or more painful for others. Painful meaning wait times, up to ten to twenty minutes. So depending on who you are as a rider, you'll have a very strong opinion about which way we should go. And in order to, if you could move us forward just a little bit, please. I tend to forget it's there when it's behind me. So in looking at that, the obvious thing, any, almost any transit system that's not rural says, oh, we can fix that, let's operate two buses. And have them staggered halfway, so that all this wait time is cut in half for everybody. And those two buses are in constant movement going around the loop. This system cannot, in fact, no rural system that I'm aware of can afford two buses running simultaneously on the same route. Other systems have different routes. They meet collectively in the middle. And then you either transfer, or you stay on depending on what you want. But what another bus means is the cost of the bus, the cost of two additional drivers, because one driver can't manage a whole day's system, the fuel, the maintenance, the insurance, a lot of other things. And in the climate that we're in now with federal funding, and let me make it clear, the climate we have been in with federal funding, it's not brand new. This is not a Doge thing. The pie coming to Arizona for rural transit has not changed. But the number of people eating from the pie has gotten bigger. So everybody's slice is getting smaller. As ADOT allows new rural systems into the state transit program. So actually running two buses cannot be feasible for Bisbee particularly, running a single route with two buses. It's a shame, it's an extraordinary cost. And Bisbee buses already running on very thin ice with its budget as we speak. So unfortunately, that's not the quick and easy answer for us. All right, so, one of, no, stay back, yeah. One of the uses, one of the options that we have is to continue using the system we have with the alternating routes that we have. And based on the surveys that I received, 274 of them, the biggest majority of survey respondents, now that, don't mix that up with where unique riders live. But the majority of survey respondents came from Naco and San Jose. And that makes sense, because the subsidized affordable housing is in San Jose, both for seniors and for families. There are definitely riders from Old Bisbee, there are riders from Warren, there are riders from Saginaw, and all other places. But overwhelmingly, when I looked at independent addresses for places where people live, Naco and San Jose were the biggest places. And these are the two very groups who are being made to wait the longest to get their ride. So, but that doesn't, that doesn't mean we have to change it. It can stay that way. The other alternative is to look at the possibility of going back to a single loop. So that everybody has the same headway time. Nobody's made to wait that alternative run time to get to their destination. The other big thing that can happen in either of these, both the current and any future, are fixing some things that we have to change, not because we want to, but because we have to. And these are safety issues. One of the stops that's not even on the map, it's not even an official stop, is when you come up to the light at 92 and School Terrace Road, one of the few stoplights in Bisbee. And you turn right, like you're gonna go down into Warren. I'm looking at faces here to make sure everybody knows where I'm at. Right, so when you make the, yes, yes, and possibly even sooner. When you take that ride at the stoplight at School Terrace Road, the bus has been pulling over there to serve a couple of people who live in Galena, which is downhill from there. Because the bus doesn't go ahead to Galena, it turns right and goes into Warren. So people have asked drivers, and drivers have agreed to pull over and let them on and off, right after the stoplight. And if you think about it, if you're coming down the highway, you've got a green light, and you wanna turn right on School Terrace, you don't have to stop. You can make that right turn, and as soon as you turn, you're regaining speed to move on, right? And suddenly, in that blind spot, is a bus. Pulled over, but still riders getting out, bus maybe not all the way off the road. It's a really big dangerous spot. The next troublesome spot for safety is in Naco. At the Martinez Street intersection in Naco, there is a stop with a bus shelter. And you know, it's a pretty wide road until it's full of cars with people parked. And what the bus has been doing is making a U-turn in the middle of the street, so that the door can be facing the bus stop. And very odd, the times that I rode it, they had to back up. They couldn't make that bus do a single point turn. Backing up in a bus, big, 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 no, no. So making a U-turn on, I think it's Towner, is not a good idea. What the bus could do is turn left on Martinez, stop, once they're safely in front of the, beyond the intersection, let people board and disembark, and then go around the block. The reaction I got from drivers was, not a good idea, because sometimes when schools let out, those roads are blocked up by the Naco Elementary. That's fine, then let's turn right on Martinez, and make the stop there and go around the block on the west side of Towner, instead of the east side. Either way, the Martinez stop needs to change, no backing up. School Terrace and Center, this is when you come past the high school, and you're going down the hill, and there's that kind of three-way, some yielding, weird stop. The bus stop and bench is right at the four-way stop. Right at the, where the cars stop. Bus stops at four-way intersections do not work. They create a safety hazard, because other people stopping don't know who's got the right of way. It's confusing, because if you're boarding somebody, or letting someone disembark, it takes longer than the full stop at a four-way and then you go. So people are like, well, wait, do I have to wait for this bus? Is it my turn? Whose turn is it? The car behind you is confused, can they go around you? At a four-way stop, not a good idea. An alternative is to look at moving that down center closer to Cochise Row. This would be across from the Ballpark Brewery area. Cochise Row has big pullouts on both sides, just a thought. Arizona Street and Congdon, this is another stop that creates the same problem that Terrace and Center did. It's right at a four-way stop, not, and that one is particularly busy, so not a good place to stop. Now granted, these are flag stops, the driver doesn't stop if there's nobody waiting. But a four-way stop, it's hard to know when pedestrians are crossing. Are they crossing, or are they trying to board the bus? The reason that stop was established was to support the Boys and Girls Club. It would be much safer and easier for the bus to go ahead and make its left turn. But if they see someone, the stop should be at that parking area, behind the Boys and Girls Club building. It's alongside there, that faces Congdon Street. Having a sign there, letting kids know where to stand, letting adults know that they don't just flag a bus at a four-way stop anymore, will help a lot. The southbound lane, or the southbound route at the fire station. So for those of you familiar with the bus route, the fire station is up the road from the Tin Town stop. Not too far, two tenths of a mile. But if you're southbound and you don't wanna wait to go all the way around again, where you're coming on the northbound side, where you could be pulled over to Tin Town easily, then you wanna get off at the fire station, otherwise you're going to Naco half the time. So getting off there, and the primary rider there is a senior. He now has to walk down the highway with no sidewalk, and then cross the busy sidewalk, or busy highway to get to Tin Town, to his residence in Tin Town. Whether this is a good idea, it's a safety hazard, it could be, okay, it's a choice. But right now, we're talking about a senior who may have some mobility issues anyway. Is it fair to put up a crosswalk from Tin Town, over at least to the other side, so that drivers are aware that people could be crossing here, and to be more cautious? Even signage coming from both sides of the highway, pedestrians crossing ahead, may be helpful. Yeah? That's fine, whatever makes it safer for anybody trying to get across there. The last thing on the safety issues is driver hours. Right now, the system is a twelve and a half hour long day for the bus to be driving. And we call that revenue hours. Whenever there are people on the bus, or people allowed on the bus, that's considered a revenue hour. And at that time, that's when it starts, twelve and a half laters, hours later, it stops. Now bus drivers are driving twelve and a half hours at a time, in the current way that they're scheduled. Plus, they have upwards of an hour and a half before they start the revenue hours to do their inspections, to get ready to fuel, et cetera. And an additional hour and a half after, up to, not, not hour and a half, forty-five minutes. So hour and a half for both ends, to do post-inspections, clean the bus, and if they didn't fuel at the time or needed additional fuel, fuel up. That is a upwards of thirteen-hour day for a single driver, right? Federal law allows ten hours of driving, just ten. So what does that mean for this system? It means it has to have another driver. There's no way to schedule two drivers for that kind of hourly system. Okay, next please. So on the ridership side, as I said, 274 surveys were returned. The times of the rides, actually, this, and remember, this is just surveys. So there could have been riders before six, or before seven, but none of them filled out a survey. Started, surveys started coming in as early as seven, which means that that's when either people are awake and have had enough coffee and feel like filling out a survey, or that's when most of the riders actually get on board. Most, most of the responses, when asked how could we improve the system, went for longer service hours. And so, let me, keep in mind, this is survey stuff, so statistics are kind of weird with surveys. Out of the 274, people could fill out, we asked them to fill out more than one. We wanted one every time they got on, because we were really focused on where they were coming from, and where they were going to, to find out what originations and destinations were most important. So we got a lot of repeat information, but on the comments side, 274 responses, the highest response was for a longer service. The second one was, we're happy with the service. Which was pretty gratifying to see, that most people who responded in the comments section were happy with the service. Yep. So, take a look at this real quick, and then we're gonna go to the next slide. Rides in 2015 were over 50,000 a year. Go ahead. This is what's happened since then. Fifty thousand, a huge uptake from 2014. Can you see it? Okay. So 2015, it started dropping. In 2016, it's dropping another 23%. In 2017, an additional 10%. In 2018, though, it had a spike. And this is why I asked, when did the alternate routes start? Because I'm suspecting they started in 18. And maybe, Perry, I know you're new to your job at Douglas, but it might be interesting to find out if that's what, when that alternate route thing happened. Because it would seem logical that if we went through a similar process that we're going through now, and people said an alternate route might be better, that they would try it, and the ridership would spike for a period of time while people got used to the new system. But then look what happens, before COVID, it drops another 14%. Then we get into that COVID, the 2020 through 2022, and you can see, like every other transit system, it starts to hit rock bottom, that's expected. Fortunately, we are also seeing a rebound. The real question is, are we rebounding to pre-COVID numbers? Or are we going, are we on a longer train up to more numbers? And I'm curious, because making a decision about changing a route while you're already seeing some increases in numbers will either greatly help, or it will hurt ridership. And there's no way to forecast that except to ask riders. And asking riders, I think the best thing for us to do now is to get on the bus and ask them what their preference is, the alternate route, or the single-loop route. Go ahead. So one of the things I asked myself when I started this, is why are we charging fares? A dollar a ride doesn't make a huge difference in the budget of a bus system like this. So why do we even charge? Most of the riders are using passes, most of the senior riders are using passes. But when I looked at, I did the math, got out the calculator, how much does it cost to collect fares? Because that's a real thing, if it costs more to collect them than you get, the answer is definitely, why are you charging, no, no, don't charge fares. But if you're still netting an income after you pay to collect it, then it's worth collecting. And in this case, it was a skin-of-the-teeth thing. Right now, with the current ridership, you still net 5,700 a year in fares. Which is helpful, it really is helpful, pays for some fuel. So fares probably need to keep going, they're still minimal. The fares that are being paid now are the exact fares that were paid when the city took over the system in 1998. They haven't gone up. So it's still a deal. Gas prices have gone up, labor costs have gone up, but the, the cost of riding the bus has not. Okay. So let's go back to the driver's schedules. One of the big things in that schedule is that drivers have no breaks built into the schedule. When I rode the bus, drivers would see how many minutes they were on time or at schedule, and could they successfully get off the bus, and we'll just use the Copper Queen Plaza as an example. Get off the bus, run into the building, get in the elevator, or run upstairs to the public bathroom, and run back out. The other most used alternative for drivers was a porta potty at a park on the top of Tombstone Canyon. Not a good plan, in my opinion. People who drive that long and work that hard need a real chance to stretch their legs, use the bathroom if they need to, get a fresh drink with some ice, and maybe have a look at their lunch. Lunch is another thing, so there's no lunch break, when do drivers eat lunch? What I witnessed is, they take a bite at every stop, until they've had their lunch. None of us would wanna eat lunch that way. It's not safe, first of all, because if you're down to the last bite of that BLT, you're gonna stuff it in your mouth whether you're moving or not. It's what we all, we all do it in our own cars, and that's, I'm not gonna say that's fine, but we do it. But to allow bus drivers to try to eat their lunch while moving, they're putting passengers in a safety issue, let alone themselves. So building in the schedule enough time to get off the bus to a clean restroom, to get something to drink, to move back into the bus, and allow passengers to keep going, is really essential for their welfare, as well as the passengers. Okay. The other thing that's not on this list, but I do wanna say, is drivers use their iPads or their pads to keep track of ridership. It's an electronic system that Douglas developed and shared, which is really good, because it makes keeping track of ridership really easy. But if a driver wants to talk to a dispatcher, they're doing it on their cellphones. In the city of Bisbee, it's illegal to use your handheld cellphone while driving. So making sure that drivers are equipped with earbuds, with things that allow them to have conversations with dispatchers is gonna be essential. You're not allowed to drive with a phone to your ear in Bisbee. Okay. Marketing, as far as I know, there's no active marketing plan. But the contract between Bisbee and Douglas says that they will collaborate and coordinate on marketing. But neither has spent any money on marketing, other than printing schedules in the last several years. Is this the cause for low ridership? We can't pinpoint it to lack of marketing, but we could expect that any marketing might help ridership. I would, I'm recommending in this study that we actually develop a marketing plan with measurable objectives and assign roles between the city of Bisbee and its contractor, the city of Douglas. I'm looking to develop a rider training for seniors to increase AAA passes, because AAA pays more than a fare cost for each ride it supports. So you would want to build the people who are using AAA sources as their fare revenue. And a lot of seniors might be hesitant to use the system, because they're not quite sure how it works. They're not quite sure what happens if they need to bring their walker, can they bring their rolling shopping cart? There are a lot of questions that seniors have that are hesitant to ask. It's their nature, we don't always ask what we need to know. But going to the senior center and other places where seniors gather, and having a rider kind of training, here's the bus, get on, let's show you how it works, let's show you how the lift works if you need a wheelchair, or need some assistance getting on board. Let's take you for a free ride together around the route, so you can see where it stops. And if you need a flag stop, what do you do? Where do you stand? Do you raise your hand? You know, what, what does that mean, flag stop? So getting people acquainted with the system who aren't is a real high priority. I hate to say it, but the look of the buses, the logos the buses use have been the same since 2009. How do I know that? Because I'm the one who put them on when I worked for the city. I, I love the design, but I will tell you, there's nothing about these buses as they look now, because they're older, the wraps sometimes are looking pretty rough. It's not the design, it's the condition. And freshening up these things is not a bad idea. If people see a bus that, one, isn't clean, that looks like it's 20 years old instead of the 10 years old that it is, you're not always enthusiastic about jumping on that if you've never been a rider before. Riders now love the system, they love the buses, they, they really love the drivers. I'm sure there are a few who could say some awkward things, but everybody I talked to loved those things. It's not about changing everything, but freshening, freshening up. We know on those wraps, that those wraps start to become the same color yellow. There's no differentiation between that lovely brown in the city of Bisbee, and the yellow circle that goes around it. It's becoming a little muddled, just saying. Okay. Increased social media presence. I know that people, younger people are not presumably using Facebook, older people presumably are, but not everybody who rides the bus has access. But social media is still an important way to convey information about what's happening with the bus, and even just marketing. How, when was the last time we said, hey, this is a little something about our bus driver, Jesus? Here's where, you know, he's got a family, he's been doing this for six years, you know, what's something about something going on? Have we ever featured a longtime rider and said, this person's been riding the bus since it was begun? Making it interesting for people often can make the whole bus system a little more interesting, and ridership go up. Okay. For a lot of people, this is not something they think they need. But if you want to attract more workers, and people who need a bus or alternative transportation to work and back, then you might consider, and this is last on the list, an app for smartphone use. These buses all have GPS, working GPS. Dispatchers always know where the bus is. Why can't the riding public know where the bus is? Having that information shared lets people know. I have witnessed people come on the bus and say, oh, I was afraid I missed it. I had no idea, 'cause sometimes you're early, and sometimes you're late. And I've been waiting to, to know if you're coming, or if you've already gone. Sharing GPS information in a smartphone app is not hard. It's something that could be useful, it can also let people schedule It's, um, something that could be useful. It can also let people schedule rides, buy and pay for fares, um, monitor pass, what, where are their passes? Are they about to expire? Can they renew it online? So those are all marketing tools that should be or could be considered. Next, please. Okay, so now we're gonna get down to the interactive part. As I said, I think unless you guys have other ideas, and I hope you do, I think we're looking at two choices. Keep it the same with some alternate, with some changes, like getting rid of flag stops that the bus never goes to. If you're a bus rider, when was the last time you were all the way up to Wood Canyon? There's a bus sign there. There's a bench there. It hasn't been up to Wood Canyon in forever. It's on the schedule. But if somebody who hadn't ridden the bus waits at that station for a bus, they will never see it. It never goes up there. There are other stops similar to that. But there are also stops that in looking at surveys and talking with riders, we might want to consider adding. And one of those is, um, on the way to Naco, there's a rider who regularly gets on at Fairview, Fairway View, which is on the right-hand side as you're going south. It's after, um, Purdy Lane and before they make the turn to Naco. This is a senior who would have to walk either all the way up Naco Highway to, I believe, Della, not Della, there's another one, the name I always forget. Or walk all the way down to the golf course. This, there's a space for pull-off, and I think it makes sense to, on the southbound only, add that, um, pullover. The other alternative is to return to a single loop. And that, as I said, will make, what is it they say? If mediators make no one happy, they've done a good job, um, because everybody had to give something. So by getting away, or getting away from the alternate route system, people who've had two to two and a half hour waits will now have less than two. People who had just over one to one hour and forty minutes will now have one forty to one fifty. One hour, forty minutes, one hour, fifty minutes to make that loop. And I want to show you, um, I don't have it on a slide, so for you guys who are online, you'll, um, hopefully you'll be able to see the map. And in a minute, I'm gonna ask, uh, get questions, but I'm also gonna have you come up and we're gonna talk this out, what the good alternatives might be. But one of the ones I'm thinking for the loop is if, and it doesn't matter where we start, but I, I'm gonna start us here on, at Circle K, because anything up of Circle K is never used, as far as I've learned. So why are we going up the street if nobody's catching the bus there? And that makes sense because in Old Bisbee, we're often seeing more people, especially on the upper side, who have vehicles, who have means. But if we start at Circle K, I'm not sure that I got it exactly right. This morning route, it's important that we go to Naco right away because a number of riders use, a number of riders in Naco use it to get to work. And they need to be back to work by eight, or get to work by eight. So if we, and I'm gonna make sure I've got, bear with me a second. I wanna draw the picture right. I'm gonna try my best. If we come down to the traffic circle, make our loop through Bakersville, come out on School Terrace, go down to Naco, and all the flag stops along the way, for anybody who's standing out there. come back from Naco, and this time we don't go back to Warren. What I'd like us to do is to still help the people in Galena, but not create a safety hazard at that turnoff at the stoplight. So if we turn into Galena on Noel and just go around the block, come out, there's a new Dollar General, make that a flag stop, go over to Saginaw, grab those folks, and then head back up. And then make it again. Does that make sense? Sorta, kinda, not really. Pardon me? No, Warren's right here. No, I said, on the way back. So we got, we start, let's say we start up here. We go into Bakersville, Warren, circle around, come out School Terrace, and come then towards Naco. That's, that's the Warren side of this. What's happening now is it's backtracking to Warren as soon as it comes back from Safeway. So it's, people have a, they're still not done doing what they were doing out here, and yet we're going back to Warren. We haven't picked up any new people. So we pick them up, we go down to Naco. On the way back, we're pulling off into Galena. If there's anybody that wants to get off or get on at the new Dollar General, then we hit the Saginaw neighborhood and go back into Old Bisbee, and then we repeat. Every time, though, that we make a north or a southbound, we're stopping at Safeway. That is the most popular stop in the system by a long shot. So we're coming and going in this way. And one of the, I'm sorry, one of the groups I left out that's definitely on this schedule is, and I shouldn't have come all the way down to Naco. I need to come over and grab Triangle Apartments and Copper City before I go down. Because that's where residents live, in that area. So that is just one alternative that adds some new stops. You don't see it here, but the Fairway View is new, the Galena is new. Um, but those are residents that are currently using the system, that are having to walk some distance, and they are seniors, all of them. All right, so what I'd like to do then, let's take questions, and then I'd like to invite you all up. Yeah.
Firstly, as a fellow man who's been with Bisbee for approximately thirty years and has backed the company, I'd like to say that your concern with driver safety is reading and close press, is monitoring press, words bought up, as well as the cautious safety and regarding stops that don't want to worry now. I'm very patient. I can use Wood Canyon. Um, and that was the goal of mine. Now, I, I, when I describe it, you did correct. There's, I'm gonna remind myself, yeah, there, that's what I'm saying. So the builder, um, I'm still, I'm not quite sure yet, it's not that big of a deal.
Do you live on Wood? Near Wood? Okay, okay. Okay, okay.
So I, I, I've been in this county, my family didn't set up a close town support, ever. And when I left the city, my late teens, I saw how I did it. And like you said, but if you're here to run multiple stops, on the, or to move buses, on how these are, this is when I came back. And those were the stuff I was surprised, I was confused because, like, oh, there's another bus right behind you, this rider I know, who started with me, who were probably, that I walked this point, you got the permit.
Right.
And it wasn't gaining without you two literally both vehicles, even on weekends.
Right.
For a route in Douglas, I can see, I rarely use the buses, because the buses out there, um, I think they're close to the fence, and that's why I'm worried. Even though here, uh, you fly in there, I can use walking. You know, the transit center, and it does seem like you've got one bus on their dedicated route. And that's great, if you don't need to see the symbol. However, one thing I have seen that I do in the terminal is when you roll into the wider end, especially there's schools, you've got lots of senior, you've got cars, uh, high school kids, and the bus being at, any other aspect to you that I, my view here, I can repeat, freshen things up, approach, but I hope I see what I saw in Tucson.
Oh, I'm not gonna ask you to repeat, but the people online, I forgot, they can't hear you. Just keep going.
I don't want to see what I saw in Tucson is where we see these tax increases, we see these promises, promises about better logistics, not just the bus system, but the roads in general. And Renoir project, for example, was going, I found out, started in nineteen thirty-something. When my grandmother, three generations of Arizonans now have been in Southern Arizona, and only my generation did Tucson, I was, I wanted to, um, go a little political, but I'm not, complete most of the project. And with buses, look, like I said, I'm, my dad's logistics, I get it. You cannot just, even if you had the money to replace all of your, all of your fleet at once, that'd be incredibly impractical. However, I didn't see that. I saw, so I'm a bit skeptical about freshening up because I would see a pretty paint job, but still be the old clunkers that were built in the eighties or the early nineties. Where was that money going to? And then only in the last years when I was up there, did we finally see them start to redo the, the light, the Troy, the Troy system. And then it broke down. It had to be towed by a diesel wrecker to the yard. And so when I hear, oh, we need to freshen up, again, that's great. New riders want to see that. They want to see a, a new, fresh-looking system. Us older riders, and I mean that more in how many years we, we've done it, we know it's quirks. As long as it's not like smelling bad and all of that stuff, we don't really care. And can we, and I know that we're on a limited budget, what guarantees do us, the taxpayers, local taxpayers, have that, oh, we put a new label on it, it's good, and that's gonna be the end-all? That's my other concern. My other concern is, could we work with Freeport-McMoRan to secure a better location closer to the Saginaw and the new Dollar General? What, is there anything like that? I know Freeport-McMoRan, I know that it looks like they sold that little area where the houses are, um, in the past few years. I remember, I'm old enough to remember when there was no Belstod, no Chester's Belstod signs on that. So that's my questions and concerns.
Well, let me see if I can address some of them. The, um, and you've got a question too? Anybody, you did. Okay, let, no, I'm gonna make it fairly quick. You're right, you can't dress up a pig and call it a sheep. It's still a pig. The, where, where we're at with buses is trying to keep them clean and fresh-looking as, out of respect mostly to the people who want to use it. The bu, the money that comes for this system comes primarily from ADOT through the Federal Transit Authority. That's where most of the money comes from. The city has to match that in various percentages depending on what the money is used for. Buses are almost entirely paid for out of federal funding. And ordering new, but if you ordered a new bus today, you could expect delivery in two to three years. That's the fastest you'll get it. So even planning now for, there's a, there's a couple of buses in this fleet that are way past dead in most books that say the life of a bus. So keeping that in mind is gonna be hugely important. I think from a taxpayer's standpoint, really understanding that from a financial standpoint, Bisbee could have let this go some years ago because now it's becoming a larger and larger drain on the budget, big time. More than I would have ever dreamed it would have been. And part of that is, as I said, less federal money, but a real dedication at this point from the city to keep the bus going. So I think you're right. Is putting a fresh coat of paint or a fresh wrap on a bus a priority? No. There are many other priorities, first being safety. If there is time, money, expertise, making it at least cleaner looking on a more regular basis might be useful.
You didn't mention stop four, which is actually two stops going in two different directions in two locations. The one in front of the lyric, which isn't really a stop.
Oh, I know.
It, and that, so that's been a bug in my ear for a while. And the other thing is, um, in order to use technology, this bus stop should be geolocated. And you gotta fix four before you can geolocate. Because if you're using a smartphone and you use transit, you know you go on Google Map, you click the icon, it should tell you the schedule. It's a very convenient thing. Well, it's just not right. But, and I, and I understand there's logistical issues with where to put certain stops, but I think some energy devoted to that could really improve ridership if it was more clearly, easily understood and well-marked.
I so agree with you on that, and that lyric, that is a problem that I can't quite figure out.
I think if you lost a couple of parking spaces, you could make a zone on the other side of the street, but...
I wanna shake your hand on that, and we should both be looking at Matt when you say that. Because I suggested that...
It saves time. Getting it out of the lyric is...
And that, and what Matt fears, and he's right to fear it, but I think he should be courageous, is he fears that the business owners whose parking spaces they are accustomed to having for their customers or themselves.
I'm talking about on the street across from the table.
Yeah. Either way.
There's a number of solutions, but I just think that using technology, the step first thing is to...
Get our stops in order.
To regulate the stops.
I agree. I totally agree. And the lyric is a really tough one. I, it is.
I'll just be brief. I was, uh, very happy that you did mention concern to the drivers. And I've listened to them a lot, and I think that, that them having enough time to relax a little bit and go to the bathroom is very important because the routes, they get upset when they have seniors that they need the help sometimes. With the fares, it slows it down, they're behind schedule, and then they don't have time if they want to get back to the schedule.
Exactly.
I think that needs to be addressed. And I also think, I understand pretty well your concept of the different, the two different ways to go with the schedule. But I think for the riders, especially the ones that need, that are going to work or coming back from work, I think before a decision is made, you ought to have the pers, the projected times, what that would be, so that I can take this and compare it to that and realize what the pros and cons are and make a suggestion if I have one.
Right.
But again, especially for the people who are depending on it, to go to work or to go to the doctor or different things people have to do, I think that would be important.
Yep, I agree with you. What I real, go ahead.
Couple of things too. Um, I have a coworker who lives in Naco-Sonora. I used to live in Naco, Arizona. And fortunately for me, I never had to deal with customs because I lived on this side. But I still had to be at the butt crack of dawn to catch a bus to be where I need to be in a timely fashion. Actually got picked up by Boratol because he saw me running, trying to catch a bus. He ended up giving right into town, which is cool. Anyhow, so my coworker... Anyhow, so my coworker, where I work now, I work for Bisbee. He has to, I don't know where he lives, I know he used to live in Bisbee, um, but he lives, and I've seen, I've watched that tour, usually it's pretty quick. But sometimes they're busy, and I, I am friends with an agent who's at a different post now, but he was there, and you tell me they do get slammed, and it's not often, but it's rare either. So I'm thinking of my coworker, he's the only one that I know of that works in Bisbee, lives on the other side. But I wouldn't be surprised if there's more people.
There are.
So I'm thinking of them. The other thing too is back to marketing and promotion. On occasion, I have seen tourists from other parts, I have more come guests, because they're from Arizona, ride the bus to break the mold and get to see Bisbee, because they realize there's more to Bisbee than just downtown. Again, probably a lower priority, but I think the proper promoting of the system, as well as the Douglas system, maybe in team Sir Vista, and Sir Vista does the whole GPS texting riders, uh, I think we should do, it's a great system. Promoting this as a way of tourism revenue would be a good idea and very helpful.
Mm-hmm.
I've been straight up, been asked by people, because again, I work in Old Town. Hey, is there a way we can see, they've heard of the jeep tours, but they don't wanna spend the money, they wanna do something different. Like, if you wanna ride the bus, but to them, they look at the schedule, and they're like, huh? Like I was, because it's so simple, if you're used to a more complex system.
Mm-hmm.
Believe it or not, it can be hard to, yes, it's really that simple.
Yeah, I think for a lot of people, the route has five scheduled stops, that's it. Five that have times associated with them. Right, but they're called scheduled stops, the others are called flag stops. All of the others are called flag stops. If the driver doesn't see someone there, they don't stop. That's right. It's just that in our system, we only have five, that they expect to be at those five locations at the time published. Sometimes they're on time, sometimes they're not. I'll give you one of the biggest reasons they're not. The jail deviation, how many, have you, any of you been victimized by the jail deviations? And I say it lightly like that, but let me say this. The deviations for Bisbee bus are supposed to be three-quarters of a mile off of the route it can go, to pick up seniors, disabled, et cetera. The jail is one point two miles beyond the route. It will delay the fixed schedule route anywhere from ten to twenty minutes, and that cannot be retrieved. There's no way to make up that time. And that's a big part of the lateness, and when I looked at the ridership in March, I think, or maybe April, sixteen deviations to the jail, sixteen different days, two of those days, more than one. So now you're half an hour and more behind. It's not that we don't wanna go to the jail, definitely we do. People leaving the jail system need rides, just like everybody else. But we have to build in time for that, so that everybody on the system doesn't have to suffer for that twenty, ten, twenty, thirty minute delay for the rest of the day. And that's why the GPS is important too. We wanna know where it is, how late is it gonna be? That can give us another ten minutes at the Safeway, a bathroom break for ourselves, whatever. All right, so, you guys can come up here and look at this and help me draw some new routes. Um, or you can just tell me, let's figure out the timing and the budget possibilities for a single route, and just compare the two. Because the little nuances can easily be changed without changing the timing. The only thing that I did was really looked at the actual time it takes to go into Galena, the time it would take to stop at General, Dollar General, if there was someone there, and added enough time. So in bus scheduling, you have to assume that there will be somebody at almost every stop, to be realistic. It doesn't happen very often, but it gives you that wiggle room.
When the jailers, they're getting paid a lot of money to keep the prisoners, when there's time to come out, couldn't they drive two minutes to the bus stop and leave them at the bus stop? Have we asked?
Have we asked?
Yeah, we've had, we, there was a discussion on that, and-
What's their argument?
They are not able to do that.
So, my concern is not that-
Leave it.
Once, once they leave, they can't take-
So once a prisoner is discharged, the state is now no longer liable for them.
I, I know it's silly, and I understand how-
I understand how easy that sounds, but when you have a system, and they say, no, the, once they're out, they're out, we don't touch them. Because part, part of the, part of this is, um, safety of a neighborhood as well. Um, and this goes back, you know, wh- part, a major part of why that even, this even got started with the jail is because there was a lot of safety, uh, there was a lot of problems from the people being let out in the neighborhood of Saginaw. Um, a lot of people got, uh, just a lo- a lot of things happened. You have people that are coming out of jail, going right into neighborhoods, knocking on doors, trying to get a phone, trying to get a lighter, or harassing, pounding on people's homes.
The argument, the argument is that if people have to walk when they leave the jail, the chances are a little bit greater that they might go knock on someone's door. If they get taken to the bus stop, and they know the bus is coming, chances are less.
And I think we can argue that point, but I will tell you that if the state is releasing its liability, it won't be putting them in a state car. For the same reason they don't pick up civilians on the side of the road unless they intend to do something else with them.
Well, I think it's still worth arguing.
Yeah, I agree.
Because of what you said, if it's more dangerous in the neighborhood, and people getting out of jail, and walking fifteen, twenty minutes in a neighborhood, that might be a very good reason for the state, which should be concerned about that, to give them a two-minute car.
Right. I wouldn't disagree with you. I will tell you though, that my biggest concern with the jail stop is the jail isn't paying for these rides. Nothing. And the, the released person doesn't have the dollar to pay the fare and isn't asked to pay the fare. I think the city needs to negotiate some terms with the sheriff's department, not just for the fare, the one-dollar fare, but the actual cost per ride, which is much, 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 much higher than the dollar. It's, yes.
I think too, like, no, I, I-
You guys, we could grab these lines, we have something to say.
Of course, my bad. Um, as someone who's had to go to JP to pay fines and go to traffic court, uh, I, I wish that stop was there for when I needed to go to court. I'm glad I don't have to use that stop, but I think that's true, because it's not just about people who are coming out, but people who have some small crap on their record, need to go take care of it.
Right.
Like, if they have traffic, traffic court, or something like that. And that would be helpful. The thing too is, does the jail not at, at least call dispatch before they release the prisoner, say, hey, we-
Yes, they do. They do call, and that's how the driver knows to go and get them. What the jail doesn't have control of is when a judge releases an inmate. When the judge's office calls the jail and said, release inmate number two, they are obliged to release them at that time. They call ahead as much as they can. The dispatcher at Douglas, because Douglas does the operations for the bus, lets the driver know, they, at their next heading that way, they need to go to the jail. They don't turn around from wherever they are and head straight to the jail. They have to be heading in that direction.
So, would it frequently now place, is it turned, are they using other stops?
I wouldn't say as frequently as other stops, but what it does is, when it does happen, it throws all the other stops off. Yes, exactly, exactly. So, I'm not suggesting it become a stop, I think it's still a on-demand call when you need it. But I think that we have to build in the wiggle room in case that happens. So if it happens at one o'clock in the afternoon, everybody until six-thirty that night is gonna be late. So if we build in some time for those to make up that lost time, it, yes, maybe you have to wait longer, but you'll know you're waiting longer, and, you know, it's expected that you'll be waiting, because the bus doesn't come to this next stop until this time. Any ideas on alternative routes, or have you given any thought to? Mm-hmm.
They did purchase a hundred bus passes. They did purchase a hundred bus passes at the jail, however, between the staff and when it gets to the bus, we're not getting those tickets back. So, there's a lack of communication within their own system, so we haven't gotten any more purchases. And I know we've gotten quite a bit of, uh, inmates released, so.
Right. I just think that this is an organization, the jail, that should be paying the cost per ride and not just the fare. They can. They can. These are people that are buying all kinds of things. So, anyway, it'll be a suggestion in the, in the study. Any other route ideas? If not, we're gonna, I'm just gonna go with, stick with the alternate with some adaptations based on flag stops that are not used in new flag stops. And then I'm also gonna say, here's this single loop idea, here's how long it would take, here's how much it would cost. Anything else?
I think Wood Canyon should definitely be a flag stop, because there are two reasons. There are gay people, like, they're not, they're not around there. It's a very small minority. The other thing is, if people in Bisbee happen to be in Old Bisbee, or getting older, this piece of town of older people, and some people who are driving now might not be driving. They might have an illness, they might fall, they might not be driving and need the bus in the future. So, at least as a flag stop, I think it's important to include it.
What if we went all the way up to Wood Canyon as a flag stop and then came down eighty to, back to the lyric? Instead of just circling around and coming right back down Tombstone?
Be faster.
Be faster, save some time. Would, I don't think, I think anybody who wanted on would get on, on its way up. If it comes, goes around, gets on the highway, comes down to the, the off-ramp, you know, and comes into the lyric, stop again. The only thing I would say about that is, because it turns around, and what I had suggested in this loop route is Circle K, because Circle K is a place to go to the restroom and get something to drink. It's also a place where people can get off and on. If, when it turns around at Circle K, it's coming down on the Copper Queen Publishing side, which is where a lot of people get off and on, rather than coming in on the lyric side, where it's a little more confusing. Matt?
Um, I know people are going up to Circle K, but one thing, if, if we do this, there still is the bodega that still has drinks, and there's bathrooms upstairs. So there still is, you know, obviously it's a much smaller, limited amount of, and I'm not trying to, you know, put somebody out there to go to their place, but I'm just saying, uh, they, it is like a, a convenience store. So, I mean, there is, you know, an, an alternative for that, so.
But if you don't go any higher up than the lyric, most people in Old Bisbee will have to come all the way down to the lyric, instead of just halfway down to Circle K.
Yeah.
You, in, in transit terms, you hope that people don't have to go more than a half a mile. For seniors, you hope they don't have to go more than two-tenths of a mile on foot. And having, cutting off all of Upper Tombstone creates a much longer walk.
And I'm just saying that because of su- the suggestion of going on Highway eighty. I'm not saying not do, go up there at all.
Right, right.
I'm just saying, if you go, just go up and not, not, not coming back twice to Circle K, that's a deal.
Oh, no, absolutely. Yep, you could do that easily. Any other suggestions? I'm truly open to them.
I know that I, the, uh-
You should really-
I came in, I came in late, I was gunning for beyond time.
I'm just giving you grief, I'm just giving you grief.
Um, so my, I think the biggest thing, I have a twenty-nine inch entry level, keyword entry level mountain bike. And when, I remember one day I was getting on, I think I was on a Cash Connection, go riding out there near the Wachukas. And I think it was, as soon as it was like, they told me your bike's too big, I'll let you slide this one time. Because you're like, basically, you're already here, but now you know. And I admit, I've even turned my handlebars, I'm trying not to use pro- uh, technical terms, because I don't think anyone else who's a mountain biker, um, inward, and that was able to get it into slightly, make the dimensions slightly smaller, and so was able to get a little bit more into the rack. The big thing is, is the width, again, entry level. Go up, you can get tires almost as wide as your bike matters on mountain bikes. When I'm, when I'm riding on hard pack or pavement, I max out my prep, my air pressure. So when I've done that, it's really hard to get them to fit between the rails of the rack.
So you need a bigger bike rack?
Yes, but I've also watched other people be turned away, or look at the rack and go, I'm not getting my bike on that.
Okay.
And I think, and I've seen people who, and I think there are other things, there's people who want to come here, I was looking at, I did a survey that was a coffee company that's not related to this. What, that was like, why are you here? Um, it was geared, I was more towards tourists, but they made it look like it's for locals. But I straight put it, well, I'm local, and simply sometimes the reason why I wanna, you know, do public transit and use public right-of-ways is simply to have fun.
Right.
Which is mountain biking, that's, and one thing, if you had bigger racks, I think in his promoter right, you could get more people who are into that kinda thing, into mountain biking, or at least, uh, mo- bicycle cross, which is, they're different.
No, I, I totally agree with you, and I think it's a good point that I hadn't thought of. Because of the Bisbee Bike Ways efforts to create multi-use paths, having the bus ready to move people that are multiple bikes, you know, people traveling together, is a great idea, and I think I'll be sure and add that, and bigger, wider, for mountain biking.
Longer and wider. The other thing too is people, roadies, on the upset, we have these slightly smaller wheels, but they're incredibly narrow. Their bikes tightly fit on the rack, but because their wheels are so narrow, that they're, they're a bit on the wall of each side.
All right, I got it. We need to move on. Can you go to the next slide, please? And then you had something to say?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, yeah, like, with e-bikes, you have three-inch, sometimes three-and-a-half inch wheels, and, yeah, they just won't fit on that, those things, so. I, I understand, because I have a e-bike myself, so.
All right, we're gonna, this is just a list of the proposed, um, flag and scheduled stops that I drew out here on this map. Um, the only big changes will be, if this is a, a preferred option, Circle K, starting, but I'm gonna reconsider the Wood Canyon, come down the highway. Um, there were so many of these flag stops that are mislabeled, which is fine for locals, but not so good for new riders. I am wondering how many new riders looked and said, where the heck is Bank of America? I'd love to bank at Bank of America. Well, it doesn't exist. Okay. Um, so properly naming them, and then, you know, moving that terrace and center to Cochise Row. Uh, let's see, I'm, I, you know, some people would say, why didn't you take Washington Avenue out? We never stopped there. Because I really want this organization to talk with the hospital and their physical therapy department to help promote the Bisbee bus, especially for people with physical or mobility disabilities. At the moment, they're going through therapy, great, but we can get you there, and we've got a lift, and we know how to deal with chairs and this and that. So, um, then going down, adding the one for Fairway View, going back north, I don't, Dollar General and Galena were the big changes there. So, next slide, please. So next slide please. And, um, I'll make this available to you if you want to look at it, but keep in mind, we're still in draft, so nothing's been decided. So the impact on all this is that regardless of the changes, some riders will be inconvenienced. The riders now who are used to 10 runs and an hour plus headway are gonna take a little longer, but the Naco San Jose people will be very much more convenient because they don't have to wait two and a half hours. Dropping ridership increases cost per ride, which could impact the competitiveness. If that ridership trend doesn't keep going up, the cost per ride now is, is significantly high. And when the state looks at systems that they're gonna fund, they look at that and you don't want this. What it says to them is you don't have enough riders for us to invest money. Aggressive marketing could help ridership. Additional, you're in my way there. Additional, uh, there we go, additional marketing, okay, additional dri, um, driver will increase safety. This is not a should do, this is a must do, uh, you can't be in compliance with federal law in the current situation. Overall, cost reductions are not feasible right now. Because we have to add this driver and we're not really changing the number of miles it travels or the fuel consumption or anything. We're just trying to, um, maybe make it better, slightly better, sometimes worse, but hopefully better in the overall. But that's not gonna save money. Next. Okay, so the next steps of the study. The, I think I'm gonna get back on the bus before I finish this draft and talk with people about these two choices and really get a better fix from unique perspective and not surveys that were filled out 10 times by the same person. What they, well, we asked them to, so, but I want a little more feedback. And I'll use that and your feedback, like, that I've taken notes on in the draft. Um, I'll be constructing a budget estimate based on the preferred route. And then I'll present a final draft for a 30-day public comment by June 25th. Uh, I'll be submitting it for 30 days on June 25th, so we'll have until July 25th to receive comments. We'll have a copy of it at the library, um, there'll be a copy here. And if you have other places you think would be wise to have a printed copy, we can do our best to get it there. We'll include any final comments in the final plan and that final plan gets, uh, submitted to the city of Bisbee and ADOT by July 30. Which is the deadline from ADOT's point of view. ADOT is paying for this study, by the way.
Your trip times window was, your numbers kind of kept bouncing around, but if you were to go to the single loop and you're adjusting the schedule anyway, could you add in the driver break?
Yes, I, I have considered that.
And, I mean, it does seem important.
Yeah, it does. And even if, e- even if people said, let's keep the same alternative routes, we go to Naco this route, we go to San Jose this one, we go to Naco the next one. Even if we did that, I'd have to change the schedule to give those drivers the needed break and that deviation wiggle room that's needed. So those 10, even if we stick to alternate routes, the 10 runs that we can fit in to 12 and a half hours will probably come down to nine at the most, eight more likely. Because even with that, we, even with the current system, we still have to have another driver. Your drivers are amazing.
They're not that this is amazing.
Oh. They truly are amazing, so, um, be sure and, I heard lots of comments from riders when I was riding the bus that they loved the drivers, so, just so everybody knows. Okay, next. So did you guys, your riders, both of you, is that right, three of you? Did you fill out surveys?
Yes.
Multiple surveys? More than one?
At least three.
Okay.
I think one.
What?
I think one.
Okay. Well, the, the reason I ask is for every survey that was filled out, that person's name that they gave it went into this envelope. So some people have as many as 18 of their names in here. And other people have one. But we're gonna, um, we're gonna have a drawing for a $50 Visa card. Can I ask you to draw? Just pull one out. And you not have to give a resume. Robert Cool. Okay. Pardon me?
Congratulations, Robert.
Right, congratulations, Robert. Now, I've been not ignoring but forgetting about the people online, did anybody stay on or did they all get off? Oh, good, do any of you guys have questions?
You can, uh.
I do not.
Anybody else have questions? Or comments online?
No questions.
No questions. Well, thank you all for enduring this, I appreciate all of you. Um, we'll let Robert know he's got 50 bucks he didn't have before. And, uh, um, look for the closer to finish draft. Um, I'll be giving it to Australia who hopefully will make it available through some link, either through the library or on the website or both perhaps. So you can get a look at it. And then any questions or suggestions, you can go to Lorena. And do you guys all know Perry, the riders here, do you know who Perry is? Perry works for the city of Douglas, she's the transit manager. So she manages Douglas Rides, the Cochise Connection and Bisbee Bus. She's got her hands full. Um, I would say this, if any of you, any of you all out there in Benson, Wilcox, wherever you're from. If you want to recommend a driver or someone who would be a good driver, now would be the time to recommend them to Perry because she's gonna need another one. And we all know how hard it is to get drivers. Okay. That ends.
So I think it's Roger's CD, I just sold it over, why is it doing these?
It requires a CDL, a commercial driver's license, which you have to do a training and test and it costs money to get it. And that's a big reason why it's hard. So if any of you want a CDL, I'm looking at people who might be interested. There's no age limit as long as you have an active, uh, safe driving record and a CDL. I would encourage you to consider it. Okay. Are we done, Matt?
Uh, do I have a motion for adjournment?
I. Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, and do I have a second? Alright.
I'll second it.
Second.
Alright, all, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Alright, thank you everybody, I appreciate online for sticking with us, I know, I have, I apologize, uh, this is a brand new system, so, still trying to figure it out.
Thanks all for coming. Um, and if you guys see Robert on the bus, tell him you won 50 bucks.
Alright, thank you, bye-bye.
Thank you everyone, have a good one.